Yeah, it's not blocked right now. You want to just like put your finger on that so it doesn't slide away? Yeah. That's what I'm not. No. Forget it. It's gotta be like right there. Yeah. Yeah, just like don't, don't let this slide. You see what I mean?
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Feel very important. How? She's texting me. Grab your phone. Okay, do you want me to record on my phone?
All right, you ready or all?
We're ready.
Grab your phone and text Colleen.
To order at seven eighteen. Stand for play.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from December fourth? We approve the minutes from December fourth, will we? Seven. In all favor, five minutes. And can we get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, December eighteenth?
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
All right, all favor. All right, we're good. Just keep rolling on to your school committee chairperson comments. I'll just say real quickly, thank you to the administration and the teachers, the staff, and everybody today for surviving and getting through. I know it was a tough day. We appreciate everything you guys are doing to make it happen and keeping our kids safe. Thank you for that. Student comments? I don't think we've got any school committee representatives this evening.
No.
All right, and I think we've got-
We have a student group, yeah.
Perfect. We got some folks from the Student Spanish Exchange Program to discuss the highlights.
Awesome. I'm gonna do a quick intro and give some thank yous. Thank you, number one, for having us here. We have had the distinct pleasure over the last two and almost a half weeks to have students and teachers from Leon staying visiting us. I'm gonna have Senior Rosoto come up in just a minute and do some other introductions, but I just wanna give a huge thank you, number one, to Senior Rosoto for organizing so much of this and all of their activities. She'll talk a little bit about them. Number two, to our host families and students for opening your homes. I know it's been an incredible experience. We're joking about tears. There will be tears tomorrow. They leave tomorrow morning to head to New York. And to our teachers and our whole school community for welcoming them. I know it's a big undertaking and it's additional students in our building, but it has just been our pleasure to have them here. So Senior Rosoto, come on up. The whole group can come too. Come on.
Come join us.
Danny and Lisa, don't hide.
So this is Danny and Lisa. They're the chaperones that came with twenty-seven students from Spain, ages sixteen and seventeen, so. And I have also a few of my students and two of the students from Spain, and they're going to talk about what their experience has been while they've been here. And Joe and Reed are going, they went on the last exchange, and they can talk a little bit more about what was their experience like. While they've been in school, they were able to shadow some classes. They spent a lot of time with my classes, so it was great to see the kids communicating. They had the opportunity to practice their English and our kids their Spanish. So that was very good. We took pictures. We enjoyed that a lot. Today, they have the opportunity to help them to study for a quiz next week. They visit a few places. They went to Fenway the first day. My god, it's like. Fenway, the. They made, like Harvard Candy mentioned. I'm glad that my students came because they know my schedule better than I do. But I'm going to give them the opportunity to speak for themselves about their experience.
Hi, I'm Madeline Wybe, and I'm a sophomore in Spanish immersion here. I've loved having the Spanish kids because I've been able to practice my Spanish in ways I couldn't before. And this experience has really made me want to go to Spain and learn, learn more about their culture and how they live their lives differently from us.
Hi, I'm Reed Dunster. I'm a senior. I went on the exchange program last year, so I went to Spain. And it was just great to be able to like make a connection with somebody. Like I still talk with my girl that I stayed with today. And it's just cool to be able to like basically, because you just, you shadow them there like for two weeks straight. So you basically like kind of live how their life would go. So it's cool to be able to see how like somebody your age who lives across the country lives.
My name is Riley. I'm a sophomore. At first, I was a little nervous I wasn't gonna be able to connect with my girl. And then we started getting to know each other and connecting. And I've definitely made lifelong friendships with all the Spanish people. I just love my women.
We pay her to do this. I was like, I'll give you a hundred a quid if you cry during the presentation.
But it'll definitely be hard to let go because I don't know. I just can't wait to see them again and go to Spain.
Hi, I'm Joe Trainer. I'm a senior. I went on the exchange trip last year, and I'm hosting a student this year too, Adrian. And while I school-choiced into Misco, so I was never a part of the immersion program. But when I went to Spain, it really just wanted me to make, I just really wanted to learn more Spanish. I mean, I talked with a bunch of kids. I made a lot of friends. And they're just like American kids. We had a great time. And I just wanna learn more Spanish now, so I can enjoy it even more.
I'm Adrian, one of the students from the Villapastoral School that come here to the exchange. I, I think that this experience was very red for everything, to the families, the joke, to Miso to and the activities that we did, to the place that we visited, and our culture and history that we learned. I think that everything makes this exchange the best exchange for me ever.
Well, I'm Elena, and I'm also from the school Villapastoral in Leon. I would like to thank all the host families for hosting us and the school, especially Senior Rosoto, for taking care of the exchange program and guiding us throughout this amazing experience. During this short period of time, we have been able to learn a lot about the American way of life. Like the times, like the meal schedules. Delicious dishes and donkey, and donkey donuts. That we will for sure miss when we go back to Leon. And I encourage everyone to come because it's, we're, we're, I'm gonna miss them all. Because I've made really good relationships with them, and I would love for them to come. And like, we're waiting for them to stay.
I just wanna add that, you know, I have to thank the community, the administration, the teachers, everybody. Because without the community, we couldn't get this done. And I know everybody in the office, I mean, the phone calls were nonstop. Can you please get this done? Can you, you know, and everybody was so helpful. The teachers opened their classrooms and it's, it's so far has been a great experience for all of us, I think.
I'm sorry, because that was our sentence.
We are so grateful to be here. I'm very happy of coming back because Danny and me, we were also the chaperones past year, so we enjoyed it so much. We are so grateful to the school, to all the Spanish immersion community. We feel like home. And we think this is an amazing experience for them. We see how they improve with their English, like to be outside of homes, taking part of this culture, so we enjoy a lot, and we are hoping to come back again very soon. Thank you so much.
Questions, 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 questions. It's only one quiz I'm gonna give you. Stop, stop the crying.
So, so four, four Spanish exchange students. Four, four Spanish exchange students, what was your best experience?
Probably, probably like getting to see like how they live. Because it was actually like a dream, like see that everything's like in High School Musical. And like the, the yellow buses.
Now, what about, what about the worst experience?
Maybe.
I think that we don't have our worst experience. Everything was good.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, everything was, yeah.
Thank you for visiting.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for all the hard work you did. Thank you for all the hard job you have done. Thank you for hosting us, and we hope your students will visit Leon very soon. And thank you for taking.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Cohen, your turn with the superintendent.
All right, I have a few, few updates in here. So I'm gonna begin with the most exciting one. We have Ms. Bonnie Nieves here tonight, and we're going to be publicly recognizing her for her own recognition that she just received. So I'm gonna read through, and some of this is pulled from, I don't know, actually, you could, you should come up. You should come up right now. You come up and you can sit next to me when I talk about you. And then, is that good? Even better. All right. So we wanna congratulate you. So Bonnie here was, is one of our Nipmuck Science teachers, and she was one of the recipients of the two thousand and twenty-three County Science Educator of the Year Award for Worcester County. This award is awarded by the Massachusetts Society of Science Teachers and goes to a select group of peer-nominated educators who have benefited the field of science education in Massachusetts. Bonnie has made significant contributions in organizations like ISCE. Did I say that right? ISTE, Ed Reports, and MasQ, where she is on the board and has taken on leadership roles to advance science education. As an instructor, her commitment to empowering self-driven students and making classrooms more engaging and equitable has created environments where students can thrive. Bonnie has received many accolades and nominations throughout her career, such as recent nominations for Teacher of the Year, nominations for the President's Award for Excellence in Math and Science, and there's a whole long list after that. And when she isn't teaching, she actually was an author of a book. I don't know if you know that. Be Awesome on Purpose is the name of the book. And she provides ongoing professional development here for our colleagues, for colleagues afar in online. So I'd like to also mention that they shared that she received this word. It was in November, early November. I think November seventh, sixth or seventh. And she received it because they wanted to honor her for advancing the science education locally and nationally, which was part of the award. And I got to watch. I couldn't attend, but I watched the whole video, so I pulled some of their lines out of that. That's what I was doing. So, and they highlighted her broad impact for developing the online PD they mentioned, reviewing instructional materials in the Ed Reports, and just her work with high-quality science resources and her overall teaching philosophy, which emphasizes making teaching personal, culturally relevant, and technology-enhanced. I have the pleasure, as I mentioned, to be able to go into all the classrooms in all the district. And I love when I get to go into Bonnie's class to see the amazing work that she does with students. And we are very lucky to have you here. All right, so I, you have something there. We're gonna have you come on up. We're gonna take a picture of you, make it official.
North and from the Bay area. All right, make it official. There you go.
Oh, nice. Thank you. And I don't know if you wanna say a few words about your experience here? Yeah, sure. I'm gonna make this really short because I tend to be pretty long-winded. But one thing that I, I have been waiting to come to work at Nipmuck for years. And when a position finally opened up, I was thrilled to be able to come work here. And it's just as I imagined, the, the staff and the administration are incredibly supportive. And if it wasn't for that support, I wouldn't have been able to accomplish the things that I have in just the last three years. So I really look forward to what lies ahead. Thank you for everything. Thank you. All right. So next up, we have a, we have a couple of quick field trip requests. I know Eric B. had talked about in the future, maybe with some of those out-of-state field trips, that maybe the first time that they come forward, we could have them present. But in the future, they can maybe submit that proposal so they don't have to come back and present every time. I'm pretty sure both of these were new to us, so I add them. So we have a quick presentation overview in case we have questions. So the first one is for, which one is just gonna come on up and talk about Ms. Erin Ellis's trip to the Mystic Aquarium.
Great, thanks. Hi, everybody. This is a quick one. Erin Ellis, one of our fantastic science teachers, who's in charge of our Reed Science Program. Each year, she takes students to the New England Aquarium in Boston. It's becoming increasingly challenging to do that. Buses no longer travel to Boston for a variety of reasons. So Erin is looking to make a switch this year and bring them to the Mystic Aquarium instead, which I'll another great burn. Early February, about forty people altogether, three students and some chaperones. And thanks for considering. I'll be answering any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Got a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
All right, all favor.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Next up, I'm gonna have Robin come on up and on behalf of the seventh grade teachers, talk about their field trip that's coming up soon.
Does school have to be open?
So our seventh grade teams historically go to a performance of A Christmas Carol. And they will be going, they would like to go to the Trinity Theater in Providence. That trip is planned for this Thursday. And so our plans are underway. The students are currently reading A Christmas Carol, so they'll be almost finished with the novel when they go to the performance. And this gives them an opportunity to see live theater and then be able to bring what they're reading to life, so have that experience in a, in a theater setting. Happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve? Do approve field trip, field trip to A Christmas Carol in Providence.
Thank you.
So much so. Second. All right, all favor. All right, we're good.
Thank you. Next up, we have, and I think I have probably come forward with a grant award announcement at almost every school committee meeting this year. I'm gonna go back and check, check that, but I think the last few. This one, we're really excited about. We partnered with Upton. We really wanna thank Joe Laiden for, he, it had to be submitted by a town. So Joe submitted it, but this was a community compact grant award, and we received a hundred and twenty-five thousand to fund a joint MURSD Town of Upton IT project to improve hybrid committee meetings. And so it will be improving the audio and visual systems here in the PDC. And we were able to do it here at Nipmuck and Upton and go in with them as well, so they could have it in one of their rooms as well. And I really wanna thank Joe Lakey and Colleen Terrell, who worked on the grant as well. It was a very collaborative effort to pull it off in the time that it needed to be pulled off and to come up with a project that, at first, we thought we'd be able to do it for our district. So we had a couple, that was one of them, but we had a couple of projects. And then we realized that, we learned that it had to go from a town. It couldn't come directly from a district for this particular one, so we had to partner. And we worked it out in order to get something that had been on our capital list, on our list here. So hopefully that'll help us out in the future for some of the sound at home.
Great.
So communication updates. I wanted to give you a couple of updates. One, I've been working on the website, and I added this in just to, anytime I'm gonna do some major upgrades to the website, I'll just give you some updates so you can kind of track the progress. And so that's one of the communication goals that I've been working on. We added in buttons all across. It may, may not sound too exciting. I was pretty excited, you know, working through this. But we added buttons and quick links on all of the pages. We may, you know, move around and work with them. I learned you can have about no more than eight on a page. So we, we put some of those in there that will hopefully help people. I don't know if you noticed, but on the main page, we have careers up there and enrollment up there. And into the next year, the next page is to have a school choice page that we put in there. So people who are looking into school choice for the next year will have all of the information. That's something that I wanted to add in. So as you ever go to navigate the website, if there's something or feedback that you get, we try to incorporate that and get feedbacking to keep upgrading it. And you may notice that the formatting changed on the homepage and the other pages for the schools. And the formatting shows the live feed. It used to be a live feed on the right, and it wouldn't show any images, and it was just quick little live feeds, and it wouldn't pop an image up. We changed it so you can actually see the images and you can add some pictures into some of the live feed updates as we go as well. And we're also looking at, this is just more of a, I don't know, I guess along with the branding that I'll talk about in a second, some of the updates, like the district header, we're trying to work on our headers too, so they show up just visually with a nicer appearance on some of our pages, so you can see some of those are starting to get integrated into it as well. And then we're, next phase, we'll be looking especially at probably Nipmuck and Misco, whether or not we can use some of the program boxes that we have on that homepage and then add in direct links and highlights of programs at some of our schools. And then if we felt that there was a need at elementary schools, then we could do that as well. So that's something I've been working on. Something else related is we continue to do the district rebranding process, including the modernization of our logos. And looking back, when I set up for some of these meetings, I kind of look back to see what are some of the highlights and some of our strategic goals we've been working on. And typically about mid-year, sometimes in January, I provided some updates related to that. For those of you who weren't here at the beginning, when I did my entry planning process for the superintendency, one thing that I noted and learned was there was a strong desire in the community to modernize our logos. One case we were looking at was whether or not we can start to build this connection through the whole district, so it doesn't feel like separate entities. So one thing you noticed, we have all the Nukier, let's talk about that. But that was just one, one aspect of it. But we're looking to try to build that common brand for the whole district, and that's important. And I've been really proud of our thoughtful approach that we've been taking in the last three years since I've been in this role. So some updates, in case you aren't aware, at the district level, so far we've updated our Mendon Upton logo, as well as updated both the Misko Hill, Middle School logo and Nipmuck Regional logo. Past four years, we've been shifting from the logo that had the Native American imagery to the N, which is what you would be seeing on everything now. We shifted that in our signage, our merchandise, our uniforms. We're really highlighting how proud we are of Nipmuck, and it's really coming through. And even coming back to like what Chris Schmidt has done in athletic programs in particular, was building a lot of teamwork and leadership with our members of our athletic teams. And we didn't used to have a lot of branding around our athletics, and it's really kind of built out, and now with the logo with that, it's taking off. At Misko Hill Middle School, we did the same thing a few years ago, and we're continuing in a lot of the stuff that we're using and shifting to the MH. We removed the arrowhead image and removed references to the Braves within the last couple of years, and we have more merchandise at Misko Hill. We've created a timeline that we've been working on for uniform replacements. And also when we have building and project work that comes up that's needed, and we, so we didn't just go all in and say, hey, this year, we're gonna try to change everything. I think it's been really thoughtful, so when we needed to work on a gym floor, needed to work on a sign, or needed its next run of uniforms, that would be the time, and we budgeted for it, so we had it all laid out for us. I don't know if any of you are aware, I mean, hopefully you are, because I just sent you some info on it, but I don't know if you had been before. But there's been some articles out that, like Metro West just did an article on this. But there's legislation that's pending for a third year in a row related to the state ban on the use of Native American names, imagery, and references in athletics. And the use of warriors associated with the Nipmuck school name would also be impacted if that legislation went through. I shared with you the two letters from two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty from, from the Nipmuck Nation that had been sent out, and a lot of the, particularly the last one was sent out because of a lot of the conversations that were taking place in different school districts, and they were trying to be supported. But someone asked me, like, seemed like a standard letter. It was sent out, and it's because they were trying to say, hey, this is, you know, what we'd like to change. It clearly, if you read through the letters that I shared with you, it indicates their desire for the removal, with their statements, and it said they stand in opposition to mascots, imagery, and language that falsely impersonate the lives of indigenous people. So while we here in this district do not have that and do not have mascots, we have removed the imagery that we had. And the next step is any future conversations we might have about language related as well. But it's been a, I'm really proud of the work, and it's been really thoughtful. And I just wanted to give you kind of that mid-year update on that aspect, just because it is in the news. You might get questions on it. I just wanna make you aware of the work that we've done so far. And as we do anything in the future, we'll, we'll come forward and engage you and bring updates as well. Okay?
Sounds good.
Last one, updating today's weather. It was a day. That's all I can say. I'm gonna try to give you the rundown. I did send out communications to families and to staff just to try to give more details, because it was so quick-moving this morning. Starting around, and I had a whole time when I went through, but starting around five thirty, five forty-five, I received the notification that we had the fallen tree, which is still there. You know, they're still dealing with those wires when we were trying to get to the line on Mendon Street. And it took, and first I hear that the tree is down. It's gonna impact bus routes. I looked on the outage map for our national grid, because I know anytime a tree goes down on that street, we have power, if Misko's here, power comes in this way from Mendon. It also comes in this way from Upton. Typically, when the power has gone out, most of the times it's because trees have taken down the lines on this side, on the Upton side. And when we checked, it said that we were out. And when we looked at the outage map around five forty-five, six o'clock, there are only a few outages actually in the region that were noted, at least, you know, affecting our schools. So at that time, it said it would be able to be up and running by seven AM was the restoration time. Now, that's obviously before they knew the trees were about to take down all of the other areas in town. But at that time, we thought, okay, you know, it looks like we can have school. It says it's gonna be back on at seven AM. And I know that the buses start to pick up Misko students around seven to seven-ten. And so that's the last I can make a decision. And so we, the police said they'd get back to me to see if they can get an update on whether or not there'd be a change. Let's see, around that time of seven, the estimated restoration time shifted to about nine AM for Misko Hill. And let's see, I needed to let them know that there would be a delay. One time I tried a three-hour delay, and Mo, who runs it, our buses, said that it, that she didn't have enough bus drivers today in order to do the three-hour delay. She thought she could do the two hours and put in for the two-hour delay, which is a more typical delay. Then I decided it would be a good idea to drive to Misko from my home and check things out. And in that time period, seven forty-five to eight thirty, it started to really deteriorate rapidly. So I was getting reports coming in from the police, you know, reports from people in town. And they were saying that there were additional blocked roads. Please let people know that the buses are gonna, are starting to have to turn around and do different things. At this time- At this time, buses had already picked up, like approaching that time after eight, some of the elementary students. And then I heard from the chief of police in Mendon, he was very concerned about all of the trees that came down. And obviously you saw the one in 16 and you saw by Alcante and then some of the bigger errors that happened within this timeframe. For the most part, some earlier, some later. And he said he just got reports that it might get worse later, so it's not like it would clear up. So I'm imagining, okay, I have people starting on the road, I was thinking of having the middle school for a delay. I know it's not ideal, but then, and I had this conversation when I was there, should we try to do, you know, should we close, just do Misco? And then we hear that Clough just lost power and that it was flickering in other places as well. So knowing that it was gonna continuously get worse, we made the call even knowing that buses, they hadn't fully dropped off students, they were we called over both schools, they said, yep, some parents are waiting to let them in, cause it wasn't time to let them in yet. And then, I have to tell you this story, I don't know how interesting it is, but I'm at Misco with no power and I'm about to hotspot, you know, because there's no internet in order to get that late message out. And then because where we are in the shop, this isn't working. So Ken says, the only, I said, do you think it'll work outside? And you know how bad it was, so there, in the little alcove, I sat on the ground in the rain, on the ground and sent out the messages. So I don't even know how bad that message sent, but I was, it was raining on me and I tried to explain as best as I could in order to get it out, which added probably another five minutes, cause I was trying to find a place that I, that actually there was service enough to send the message out. At the time, we knew that Nittmuck students were safe at school. I didn't know if it would change, so I just put out, we'll give you an update if something changes. But they were here, they were safe, so we kept them here as well. I think that's the overall update, as of right now, we have no power still at Misco. You saw that the road is still blocked, you know, we hear that a lot of national grid, that you can't send them up when it's certain winds. So that we're always starting to get at that. We are hearing rumors, not rumors, but some people are being told it's gonna be three days to get power in some places. I know that happened in South Crepton, was a noise, I know it happened in Mendon. I don't know how true that is. I reached out to the chief of police and Chief Bradley said that he put in for priority for that area to restore power to Misco. I sent out a message right before a meeting tonight, just to let people know at Misco that I'd let them know by 6:15 tomorrow morning, what the status would be. But I wanna thank my team here, who have been here with me all day as we hunkered down over at Nittmuck and at Clough to help them out. I wanna thank all the teachers who were really helpful and who were at the school already and then helped the students who if, if a bus goes to, just so you know, if there wasn't someone at home, they don't drop anybody off, they would turn around, come to the school and then we call. There weren't too many, you know, in, within under a half an hour, we were able to get everybody home. By 9:30, we got reports, buses were back at the yards. So it took about a half an hour to do that, turn around for some people. And I know it was an inconvenience and wish it didn't happen, but in a way, I'm glad everyone was, at least most of the people were off the roads. Because for those of us who had to drive through, it kept looking at you, Robin, just when we come into our legs, Pat going through Hope Dale and all around. And what I heard from my colleagues that the, around, you know, Hope Dale had to dismiss midday. Other people lost power, roads closed, but they had similar circumstances, just played out a little bit differently around us. Alright, that was a lot for my updates tonight, but I don't know if you had questions?
Ma'am, thank you. Well, so if we don't need to, I still know the answer to this today, we'll get to it, we'll get to it. But how does this affect the weird half day, partial day effect end of school year? Is, are we gonna?
So the, the three schools didn't have school, just like it was a snow day.
Okay.
So we always try to get the half day in. We always try to have school if we can, if we think it's safe. So those three, well, it's like having a snow day that just got added on at the end of the year.
So they would, so Nittmuck wouldn't, just wouldn't have their last day of school a day before it would be off?
That's how it would be as of right now. We've had similar circumstances in the, in the years, I think there was this, one time, Nittmuck was the only school that lost power at one time. And so it, it happens and with the type of weather we're getting, it's been not as predictable as here we know we're going to have a snowstorm and everyone's gonna have a half day or everyone's gonna be off. It's, it's the power outages that are kinda hurting us. You really can't have the students in school for more than a half day and you can't, at, at Misco, it was pitch black in that building when I, I got there, I'm like, oof, cause I heard there's some partial power on, but when the section I got, it, there was only like a couple rooms in the whole building that I saw when I was there. You couldn't have had any students coming in, in that dark, yeah. So, we'll see, and I think one thing we do is we also look at how many snow days, like snow, snow days, you know, that might come up throughout the season and then we kinda see how we're at. Good question.
Would a backup generator at Misco have helped? This is from my capital, capital planning.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. It, you know where it would have helped? It would have helped the other time when I, I called it, that Misco, because we knew it wouldn't be out the whole day, but I didn't want, I, it was out, so I couldn't bring students in knowing it was out and not knowing the length of time. But if we had a generator, it, we knew it'd be on within those few hours. That would have helped, it would help if the power, for all these times that the power just goes out. So just at Clough, you know, people were coming in, but we were functioning or somewhat functioning. Because we had that, you had some lights, not all of them. So if you had enough, you couldn't have a full day on a generator, in my opinion. But you could get through a half day if stuff happens like this. And it happens the most, just I think, is in trees where they're located for Misco. Good question. I don't know if it would have solved today's problem, I think in the end it, you know, we would have had issues with power, especially Mendon, it was really bad in Mendon.
Well, it's just everything happened all at the same time, from the four kids in schools.
Yeah, it just wrapped, I, I'm, it rapidly deteriorated, cause at first, like, I talked to the Lurite techs, sometimes, sometimes I'd call, but like with the chiefs and you know, like, yeah, trees down here, a couple of trees here. That was a very different conversation that I had at, you know, conversation with techs at six than at eight. It was, I don't have enough men to cover, you know, of issues and safety issues we have. And I'm hearing it's gonna continue to get worse, so I don't know with buses later, if you did a late start or anything, if, I think it would be good.
Well, so I think the forecast was for southeastern Massachusetts was gonna be the hardest day. For kind of on that borderline where you don't really know what it's gonna be, but.
Yeah, and even like a week ago, I think it was a week ago too, cause it's, always seems to be Sunday night and I really wanna get my sleep and I can't sleep, cause there's some storm, but it was, they said, oh, it's gonna be high winds and rain and we didn't get anything. You know, so I was ready that time and this, you know, I have my phone kind of, so I can hear it when I start to get the calls at like 5:00, 5:30, but yeah, I was surprised that how severe, I think everyone was caught up on how severe it got, with the winds and the impact. And I think because of the rain, I didn't watch too much of the news, but today, cause I was here, but that's what the chief said. Alright, well, thank you.
Okay.
Next up, I have, who we have here, we have Dr. Cheryl Kirkpatrick, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Cheryl? And team, so you'd like to give us some civics curriculum spotlight? Last year, we mentioned some feedback, but you'd like to hear a little bit more about some of the curriculum updates that were going on?
So thanks for having us. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves as, as we go, but these are two key members from our middle school and high school and our social studies department. And we're delighted to just share a little bit about civics in Mendon Upton and we'll call this our curriculum spotlight. So some of the questions that folks might be asking regarding civics is, what does democratic citizenship look like? Okay, or what do we do as active engaged citizens? And these are questions that we're, we want to engage our students in. So let me share a little bit with you about how the state has kind of shepherded us in this regard with the frameworks in social studies. And it's a long history that extends back even to when I started teaching social studies. But what has happened over time is that the frameworks have changed and they kind of evolved to a place where there's a really a lot of focus on civic engagement and that's a good thing. And even to what we'll share is that they're looking to actually pilot this year, an MCAS in civics this year. So that would be something that our eighth graders will be experiencing for the first time. So this history is important because as the frameworks evolve, so does our curriculum here in Mendon Upton. And so there have been changes and there have been opportunities for us to evolve our curriculum. I wanted to add this slide because I think that it's important that the community knows that civic engagement is a process that spans the entire journey of a student's career here. And it evolves by doing what we do vertically in terms of progressions in all of our curriculum, which is really developing skills and competencies over time as kids mature. And so there'll be some highlights in this and the reason these guys are here tonight is because they represent grades that actually have some really key things that happen in the journey of our, our students' journey through their civics education. Including a civics project, which appears in grades eight and grade 11 in, in our district, actually across the state. So the civics project has been specifically designed and required throughout the state of Massachusetts in order to really engage kids in an authentic experience where they're really trying to make a difference and make a change. And there are different flavors at grade eight and grade 11, but it's a progression for how the kids develop their engagement. So what I'd like to do is pass it over to Brenda and Matt to share a little bit about what the students are doing at different points in their journey. And you can start yourself, Brenda.
So I teach fifth grade social studies, I teach ELA two, which is a great position to be in, because I can teach the ELA portion of social studies, so it has its benefits. But we take a deeper dive in fifth grade into democracy in Massachusetts and in the United States as we learn about American history. So in third grade, the, the history unit is Massachusetts. And they do talk a little bit about state and local government and they go and see, they go to the town hall and they learn about the government and how our town works. And then as they get to fifth grade, we start to dig into where it all begins. Starting from like the Mayflower compact, before they even got off the, the Mayflower. And we bring it right down to the students' levels, we start talking about like rights and responsibilities. As students at Misco, you have a right to have an iPad, but you have a responsibility to use it as a technology, not a toy. And then we relate that to when you become a citizen and we're citizens that can vote, so we have a right to vote. But it's our responsibility to learn about the different views and to make the right vote or to vote for where we feel what we believe in. So we really try to relate a lot to the students, cause you know, that's where they're at. It's always about them right now in middle school, so making it relevant is important. So we, over the last few years, have really had some outdated materials. And through a grant that Cheryl wrote and then through like the civics and just being, you can speak more to it, but we went through a curriculum review of what, what resources are out there. And this year, we were able to get TCI, which is Teachers Curriculum Institute. And what we love about using that resource, and you'll see some pictures here, it's inquiry based. It also, it activates their prior knowledge and then brings them into real world situations. It gives them some PBL, so project based learning activities that they can explore to dig deeper into the inquiry process for each unit. And so one, one part of the unit four will be to really get into the economics of, in America. And so I think it ties in nicely. This program is available in Spanish, which is another reason why we really liked it. It uses primary sources, it teaches the students how to find reputable resources and what primary and secondary is, as well as just that, again, like I said, the inquiry process and diving deeper into civics. So from there, we launch them to eighth grade where they'll get it all again.
Well, they'll, they'll get, have the next step in their journey, thank you. And so just a couple of highlights for eighth grade and Brendan Rosma, wish he could have been here, but he was unable to make it. They do the civics project for the first time in eighth grade. It is more class based. And this year, a couple of highlights for the social studies at the middle school in eighth grade is a field trip to the John F. Kennedy Presidential Library that they'll be doing in March. And also PBL projects, that you've been hearing a lot about, project based learning, that really helped the kids engage in civics. One of which I had the pleasure of working with students where they were basically asked to like make a case for changing something in the middle school last year, which was kind of cool. And I just mentioned the civics pilot that we'll have in mag, thank you.
So at the high school, we kind of, we selected the junior year, so there's a relative amount of flexibility on when you can deliver the, the final component of the civics project. And as a department and with Maureen at the time, we felt like 11th grade was the best place for that. And we have a lot of these culminating activities and this one that you'll see in front of us is one that we had done for a number of years pre-COVID and they just brought it back online this past year. And we were able to use some grant funding to get a bus to go into Boston and take 150 juniors to participate in this senate simulation. So it's a, it's an incredible experience for the students. One of the next slides we'll show you has their thoughts on it, but it's an exact two, exact scale replica of the senate floor. Students come in, they're given a tablet, they're assigned a state and a political party, which is usually not the ones that they're necessarily affiliated with, which, which they actually had a lot of fun with. They'll then break into subcommittees and this year's group passed a bill on climate change. So they spent the better part of two hours in subcommittees debating, caucusing all different aspects of this bill. Then they came back to the senate floor, had a number of final speeches from our students, had very passionate speeches. And it was way more civil than I imagined it is. They were very thoughtful about the other political party might like this. And they did a tremendous job and, and these are just some of the, the thoughts about, you know, how interesting it was to come to the, to the actual senate floor, see what it's like to take this perspective, which is one of our, our, our key components of the civics project itself in referencing, identifying and understanding other perspectives. So asking them to play a different role was really interesting to them and they, they took to it very well. Our civic showcase, this would be our third year for the civic showcase and it's gotten better and better each year that we have done this. This specific picture is Kylie Budinsky raised, John, I don't remember, it was $3,000-ish dollars for Kyle Cares. And was actually in the, the picture that's coming up, Commissioner Riley, in his remarks in this first regional showcase, mentioned her specifically and what an incredible job that she had done. And all of our participants, and, and these individuals that came to this regional one, were voted on by different member, or different party members that came to our local showcase in the gymnasium. And they all went and did a tremendous And they all went and did a tremendous job. And I was really exceptionally proud of the way we showed, probably because a lot of the preparation that we had done, you know, really had our students stand out and I would, you know, it was, it was a great experience. A lot of the feedback that we get from students, one of the key components is this reflective piece that they need to reflect on their experiences. Takes place all throughout their, their junior year. We will interweave the six steps in the, in the civics project throughout the year. And we will share some duties with kids co-curricular. Part of the 11th grade English standards are research. So we will, at the beginning of the year, go through, have them pick their projects and it is student-driven, so they get their choice. We hone that down, we pass them off to English for a period of time. And then we get them back for the action portion of it, the action, presentation, reflection pieces. And the kids are, are amazing what the impact that they can make. I know Maureen's been there every single year and I think we, we invite everyone, I imagine you've all come at one time or other. I can't really remember. That day is a blur.
You're welcome to come.
That's a formal invite.
You know, the pride that they take in the project that they've chosen, that they've driven is really, is really great to see in reference to, you know, making it worthwhile for us. It's a, it's a pride, it's, it can be tough for some of the students to do it, but it can be incredibly rewarding when they, they see the, the outcome of their hard work. And we're really proud of them for that. Some of the grant monies have been tremendous for us. Last year, we had six sessions with Tom Gris- Tom Griscol of the EdTech teacher and he now owns it. And he provided us different lessons on civic engagement, how to, how to deepen civic engagement. He's, he has worked with a number of districts, so there was, we were able to draw in a lot of that experience from them and, and really work through our thoughts and where we thought we could, you know, make this year even better than previous years. So that was great. I can't pronounce.
Oh, Sarah Giannidis.
This was one that's, that's been really important to us. It's, it's really trying to deal with taking on these really delicate topics in a way that we can exchange information in a manner that takes into consideration all sides of, of the argument and is sensitive to that. And it's an exchange of information. It's not adversarial. And there were a lot of tips and tidbits on how to do that and it was, it was great. It was, you know, it was, I've been here for 20 years or so and it's among the best professional development that I've had from both the civic engagement and from the dealing with difficult, you know, topics. And I think we're gonna, it will be really helpful for us as we move into the election of 2024. That I try to not think about too much sometimes. But we've also were able to get tools that make it much easier and quicker for the students to save, save time. At the end of last year, we were able to get a poster printer that actually prints to the exact dimensions of a trifold poster, which saves them all of the cutting and pasting time, which can take them, you know, it, it can be tedious for them and they, you know, they, they get frustrated with it, but this allows us to do it electronically. We can approve it, then put it out there and it saves considerable time. And, and it, you know, having gone to the regional showcase, it made a huge, they really popped compared to some of the, some of the other districts that were there to our own horn. So that was really a tremendous tool for our department.
So thank you both and your departments and also I, I feel, and I think you got the, you caught like, we're really trying to like make this cross-disciplinary too, like engaging ELA in these kinds of conversations and the resources with civics. I left some resources at the end of the deck for you, so if you want to explore a little bit further, you can. And let's see if you have any questions.
Is the, is the, is the grant on a periodic basis? Are we getting that, are we going to go for it again or?
It hasn't been announced this year, but there was another grant that we recently applied for as a district that's related to social studies as well. It's focused more on genocide ed- education. So, but and hopefully another one that's focused on civics will appear as well.
Sounds like an awesome experience for the kids. It really does.
Yeah, and I did actually down, I downplay how co-curricular it is. We have a number of students who are very passionate about science projects that they start at different times in their NITM careers and they carry them through, whether it be cleanup or recycling projects, food pantry projects. This year, we are piloting with the Mandan Historical Society to actually work on a lot adjacent to Mrs. Moran's father's land, a historical cemetery that needs to be, that's in disrepair. So we were, we were looking for some local connections too, for some students that struggle for topics, but they were actually really excited about doing that now. So it's, it's really cool.
Very cool. Excellent. Do you have questions?
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
It's really awesome to hear the, how it's evolved over the years. I know I see it every year, but like if we go back and think to when we first started and they came out with civics action projects, like, all right, here we go. Like, you know, what are we gonna do? You know, putting up our sleeves and diving in and to see like how much those projects have evolved and grown and become more local and, and throughout all the years. So that's, you know, the credit of all the way through, not just at the high school, but for your leadership too and PD for teachers and it's been really great to see them get even better every year.
And I'll throw that credit back to having a number of colleagues in different schools that are nowhere near we are, where we are in reference to the PD, PD review you've, you've provided and, and allowed us to, to get to this point. Other schools are like, what are you doing? And our department is actually looking to present at the social studies conference next year that's in Boston. Because Darcy Daniels, one of our teachers, went to it this year, thanks to, you know, Cheryl. And a colleague that was across the way was asking questions left and right about how to increase civic engagement. And that's where we came up with the idea, we gotta take it on the road because we have something to share.
So with the program kind of crossing over two schools, when we do PD, do we have the ability to bring the schools together to, to work on these kind of things?
We did it a number of times. A lot of this PD was co-curricular when it, I mean, in, I don't even know what the word is. Interdisciplinary with, with the middle school.
Yeah.
And, and we, it's been, the only struggle has been for them to come to our symposiums because they don't have that yet. And I, and talking with Cheryl, we've, we're working to get that, that opportunity for them. So we're gonna again, do some vertical integration in reference to skills. We're really focusing on the, on the skills that are necessary and, and which ones of these can we put in the ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade? And, and what are they gonna get in the seventh, eighth, fifth, sixth and seventh grade too? And then, you know, once they come all the way through, it should be a well-able machine at that point, in theory.
In fifth grade, just a few, like a few years ago, we allowed the students to, we gave them some ideas of how they can get involved in their community. And one of the things they did was they chose an area of, a place that they wanted to do more for and make change. So we made lasagnas for this, I guess, not a, a group that does lasagna love. So for people that are sick or homeless or, and we actually gave it out to families in our community through our guidance department. So the kids, you know, drawn their masks and gloves and we made all the lasagnas. And then another group, we invited people from Hope Dale to come in. They were making the mats for the homeless using paper, plastic bags, weaving them. So I mean, we do it on a smaller scale in, in fifth grade, but it's the beginning of how they can get more engaged with their community and, and have some action and make changes.
And the eighth grade, they primarily are focusing on theirs in, in, in classes at a class level. And when we're taking it, we're, we're allowing them, well, they're, they're more mobile at that point too. So they, they can really explore their, their passions and that's, that's, that's really outstanding to see them make these impacts. I mean, two years ago, we had a student that was, did a concert at Galliford's to raise money for rhinos. It was amazing. And like, you just stand back and let them go. There's a lot for them to give to the community and it's really, really outstanding to be connected to them.
Well, there you go. Your first curriculum spotlight and we could stay here for a while, but you've got a little bit of a snapshot of some of the stuff that's happening across the district. Thank you both.
I appreciate it. It's very interesting. It's good.
And your invitations will be coming out later in the year.
All right, sounds good. We'll look in the mailbox. All right, I think next up we've got the new business, we've got the NITM principals talking about the school budget.
Awesome. Do you want us to narrow them?
Thanks for having us. Here obviously to present NITM budget, talk a little bit, kind of high-level overview of some of the priorities this year, some return on investments, what we're thinking as we move forward. So pretty excited about the new strategic plan and the focus on, thank you, please kind of control my computer now. The focus on deeper learning, obviously the high-quality curriculum instruction, but also the community partnership aspects, because we feel like that kind of goes over all of the elements we're talking about, as well as equity, inclusion and wellbeing. So you're gonna hear some of those themes kind of go throughout and we had been doing a lot of this work at NITM, but I think this year's budget continues to support those learning opportunities that we want for our students here. So our process this year was very similar to the process that we've engaged in in previous years. We reach out to departments and they work within their departments in terms of their priorities and they submit those to us. Then we take all of those budgets, work obviously within our school and district goals, and then bring forward a budget to present to Maureen and Cheryl and Jay. So that process was very similar this year as it's always been.
So we'll take you through some of the highlights from the budget presentation. The first one we have here is return on investment. We can do this with just about any part, but we chose some highlights of either unique about our budget or important to our budget. First one there is career community innovations coordinator. So that's at the expense of one staff member. We're thinking in terms of dollars and cents. This is a person who does a lot of the leadership of re-directed, connected to our strategic plan. So career innovation pathways, the internship program, also FaceTime with students and teaching the freshman seminar course, collecting and integrating our community partnerships and really leading the work for POL integration. I've talked about this position in the past. It's sort of a Swiss army knife for us. It's a position that has a lot of different aspects to it, all of which are core in bringing our vision to life. Professional partnerships, you see about $30,000 worth of professional partnerships there. Mastery is 6,000. Our biggest investment of our partnerships that are listed is Enmas Insight that ranges between about 15,000 to 17,000. It's the biggest, but it also provides a big return on investment in that it provides training for new AP teachers, week-long training over the course of the summer. And all of our teachers in English, math and science get two immersive days in October where they work with colleagues from across the state, some of the best PD, I know Shelley's attended, some of the best PD out there for the AP courses. And we've seen that show up with the student data, highest amount of achievement in the last 13 years here at NITM. You see Naviance, which is 3,500, plays a critical role not only in supporting the college search, but also in education options for kids. And then you see applied learning through B V X L. So that's a consortium from the Superintendent's Association that provides courses like 2D game design, provides manufacturing, welding, robotics, so access to a range of career-driven courses that are not currently in our program studies. And that's a $6,000 investment. We included data and staffing to support SEL, primarily talking about the investment we supported in bringing the RSS program, return school to school support services. For us, that again is staff we're talking about here. So that's an adjustment counselor who carries a caseload beyond that program. But, and academic coordinator. This is important tier two and tier three services that we just didn't have to meet the social emotional learning needs of kids, especially those who are coming back to us after medical or, or wellness hospitalizations. It's been a critical support. It's making a real difference for our kids. And again, it's for the price of, for the cost of two staff members' salaries, teaching salary and the paralegal professional salary. And departmental funding, which comes in a little under the $50,000. And this is where you see the lab experiments. It's where you see the textbooks for English be updated from the traditional canon to provide texts that show windows, doors and mirrors, reflect the student population and gets our kiddos off campus. That gives a good bridge to the next slide that we have where we talk a little bit about some of our specific departmental funding. I include this, just to echo what I said last year about what our phenomenal job our teachers do being frugal, respecting the value of the taxpayers' dollars, stretching it and being creative in how they spend the dollars. You can see the numbers in black directly to the right of the departments is the request, the initial request from the departments. And in the parentheses, you see the delta. So the black is an increase, the red is a subtraction. You can see it's an overall increase from last year of 8348. It sounds like, oh gosh, that's a lot. The most significant increase there comes out of the social studies department of 5406. That's just two field trips, one of which is what Matt talked about, the trip to the Edward M. Kennedy Center immersion model. That has been paid for by students in the past and we're looking now, since it is an important part of the curriculum, to build it into our expenses and not put it on the backs of kids. The other one is a trip for the Freedom Trail. And even in that case, when Matt was talking about our budget, we had to encourage him and say, Matt, get it in there. We know it's an increase, but it aligns with our vision. It's an important part of the civics project. We want to be funding the things that are key to the curriculum. That said, you can see they're really stretching their dollars. English department's at less than $2,000 for the entire year, all the way up to our highest expense, science department at 15,809. And again, it's where you're buying your lab materials, your dissection materials, the brains, the eyes, the rats, the things that get dissected. Yes, I said rats.
Spins.
Spins. So that's where, it's the kind of consumables that are an important part of the high school learning experience. That said too, we know that we often see some cuts from the initial round of what we propose. I think in FY '22, we saw an increase in these line items of about four and a half percent. And then in FY '23, we saw an increase of 1.2%. So while we put that in, we also will work with chairs over time in order to make any cuts where necessary, in order to make sure we're meeting the needs of the community. The next slide, you can see that we have some of the other efficiencies we had. One is the reallocation of the science teaching position. We had a really talented teacher head off to instructional coach role last year at the end of the year. Rather than refill that position, which was at about $90,000, that position was reallocated to Memorial. So to be clear, it's not a true savings of $90,000 because there was an appointment of a new teaching position. I want to be clear about that. However, not here at NITM, so we didn't then go and post and fill it with another teacher here. And over recent years, we've had some other reductions, primarily enrollment-related. The reduction of history position, of an ELA position that was not refilled after retirement and a technology position. And again, kudos to teachers and department chair of leadership for finding creative ways to meet the needs of kids. Some of that happens through grant funding as well. This fiscal year, you see $77,000, $78,000 worth of funding. Most of it coming through ICP, which is huge for us, a real game changer. This is to support the computer science pathway. So this is funding for curriculum materials, training. It can pay for things like credentials, professional credentials, critical to get this off of the ground. And that career community innovations coordinated position that Tara Bennett has, she's also applied and been accepted for a business pathway. So we're now in the process for this fiscal year to apply for business with the expectation that we'll have that same number or more up there next year in support of the development of a business pathway. Science two is looking at not next fiscal year, but the year after, at environmental science and biotechnology. So we're looking at this as funds spread out over three years. What's great about this funding too is it comes with a capital improvement grant. So when you're accepted with innovation career pathways, you get the initial startup cost, but then you get monies after that to support the material, the technology, the whatever supports you need in order to make the program come to life. So we expect additional funding coming. And then you see some of the other funding, actually civics isn't even included in there, but from the, the planning grant for innovation pathways, deeper learning grant that needs to support the Inspire Learning Day. Oh, and there's civics grant on there too. So it's about $150,000 over the past couple of years that we've been able to get through grant funding. We're excited about. through grant funding. We're excited about.
Great. So thinking about strengths and areas for growth, obviously, number one in our book is our educators that come to this building every day and make a lot happen on not a ton of funding. Sometimes they do great work in the classroom. They're creative about their resources. And kind of the long-term work we've been doing on the strategic plan. And we very much see this strategic plan as an extension to our last strategic plan. So a lot of the work that we've been doing intentionally around authentic learning and deeper learning kind of lives on, and we're really excited about that continuation. Obviously, you heard John talk about our AP score. So academically, there's a lot happening too in terms of strengths there. So our our standard achievement is strong. So to get to look at these deeper learning opportunities and other metrics for success, we're excited about. Another strength is obviously kind of the adoption of innovation career pathways. We obviously have computer science now, but the excitement that's building in our community around them, that business is very interested, and now science kind of catching the next piece of it. While we are getting funding for innovation career pathways, which is really exciting, we're excited about the model as well in terms of really providing coursework for students, but career immersive experiences. So while the state is focused on specific career pathways, we think there's opportunities within the humanities as well to continue to expand programming around that. Areas for growth, obviously looking for support still for out-of-school learning experiences, connecting our kids into the community, something we continue to work on. We're excited. This is year two of Panorama Data, and we're just about to kick that off. We'll have the next round of data hopefully in early next year to start some formal use with the data and really thinking about the supports that we have for students and additional supports that we need. Continuing to grow our community partnerships around deeper learning, around innovation career pathways, and around all of the experiences that our students have day to day. So that work is continuing. Investment requests, I mean, we talked a little bit about departmental budgets. There aren't a lot of additional expenses that you haven't seen before in the NIPM budget. John talked a little bit about the increase in the social studies. Really, really the transportation, I think it's one of the greatest challenges we face, is getting our students off campus. Buses are hard to come by and they're not cheap. So in terms of funding to have those sorts of experiences. And then our math textbooks for pre-calculus and calculus, we were on the three-year kind of lease for them, if you will, digital textbooks. So that is getting upped this year. So our textbook line item did go up in order to do that. So those were on a three-year cycle for that. Moving forward, business technology teachers, so innovation career pathways in business and marketing and finance are next to, we imagine enrollment in those courses is going to continue to grow as well as adding new courses. We currently have two business teachers. They make up the entire business department. They do great work, but they will exceed numbers at some point. Not in year one probably, but as we look moving forward, we imagine just based on DECA numbers and the students' interest in business marketing that that will continue to grow. Innovation career pathways is wonderful. The grant funds that come with it in year one are fantastic. And obviously, there's some capital money after that, but it is something that will need to be continued to be supported moving forward. So through the grant, we can purchase a lot for next year too. The FY25 year, we'll kind of pre-purchase what we can from grant funding. But moving into FY26, there are some project lead the way expenses that will be added into the curriculum as a part of that. I think there are approximately $2,000 to $3,000 per year. You're not talking about a lot of funds, but there are some funds there. And then internships, authentic learning, we're continuing to explore those. The great part about authentic learning right now is the state is doing a lot of work around deeper learning. And so whenever we can capture a grant, something that they're working on, we reach out in order to support some of those experiences. But as our students are off campus more, we're gonna look into that. And then facilities needs, and nothing new on here. Our building is going into its 27th year. And like anything in our homes that have been there for 27 years, there are, there are some things that need replacement. So obviously, a roof, talk about fields and facilities. All the furniture in here is the original furniture to the building, same with the auditorium, same with carpet. So just as part of kind of facilities upgrades and planning over the course of the next few years. And long-term projections, very similar, again, and what we just talked about in terms of a lot of work that's happening. So, questions?
Can you go back one slide?
Yeah, sure thing.
So future needs, internships, authentic learning, what kind of, what, what kind of budget does that require? And what is that funding specifically?
It's a great question, right? And I think this is part of our, so one of the internship pieces, as our students start to get out more in the community, one of our anticipated needs is some sort of summer position or stipend in order to manage those internships. So everybody essentially ends in June. Our hope is that our students' learning continues over vacations, continues over the summers, because that's when students have the time to engage in those. So a position or a stipend type position in order to support those internships and getting off campus. Many schools use internship management software to kind of collect reflections. And so we don't have all of those details yet in terms of what that or employability curriculum that would come along with, you know, identifying the needs that our students have once we start getting them into the workplace. In terms of authentic learning, transportation is a big one. You know, our community partners are wonderful and they often give of their time. So hard to specifically identify what it is. I think it will probably come in getting our students off campus. So having the district van is going to be wonderful, getting 12 students. I think if we have an additional one, it's going to allow us to get a class of students to somewhere. We know that connecting our students into the workplace is some of the most valuable experiences that we can give them. So our community partners have been coming here, but if we can get our students off campus, even better. Questions?
I guess the only one you didn't maybe hit upon on the last slide was the fitness center for FY25. Is that something that you're proposing in a wish list budget or?
Yeah, so there, so this has been something that we've been looking at. We've been slowly replacing pieces of the fitness center, things that are broken or out of date or have just been removed because they're, they're no longer functioning. We have received some donations of fitness equipment, but our hope is, do you remember the increase? Do you have it up?
I don't remember. It's something I haven't known.
Four thousand more than that? I don't know. There is, there is a number that our hope is either next year, end of this year, that we'll be able to find some funds to do a semi-upgrade. I say upgrade, refurbishing of the equipment that's in there. It is used by all of our sports teams for training. It is used by our PE classes on a regular basis, and it is, can be used by our educators and interns. You know, that for sure.
Yeah.
Oh, makes a lot of sense. Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you both. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
All right, we've got updates from our subcommittees. Jim, start with Capitol.
So there's no major update for Capitol planning we haven't met since the last school committee meeting that was beginning is January 2nd. Looking forward to hearing about the survey that was sent out to the community and we'll continue to do more surveys as the Capitol planning processes.
I assume we're gonna be hitting the critical time pretty quick.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, between now and the countdown to whatever, March, April, May, will happen real fast.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Sean, update on the budget?
Budget, we had a meeting on December 6th, and we're working through the budget process. It's really around the initial estimates and requests that are happening from different schools and departments. We've just seen one today. And then we'll have our next meeting, I think it's on the 17th of January. Is that correct? Something like that. Seventeenth? Yeah, I can look very quick. Yeah, 17th of January is the next scheduled one. So that will start to move, we'll start to move into some more refinement of the budget numbers and then come up with a consolidating sheet. We got into a lot of the, of the breakout. Jay showed us the breakout of all the, not only the, the different expenditures anticipated, but also the trends, which is a very good entry number. So yeah, that's where we are right now, heading for, still in for the March 8th of the, the open budget hearing.
If you might, I'll throw one up, comment in. It's been, it's my third year participating in that. It's great to see it's a very repeatable process.
Yeah.
So you kind of know, all right, we're in December, this is what we're doing.
Actually, that was, I was so excited last year. It was just last year, really, wasn't it? It was really just last year. I mean, that was like a revelation, having that, you know, be fixed and repeatable and
Yeah.
Nice and all. Oh, man, it was wonderful. And presentable too, to student both towns meetings, everything was very, very wonderful. So we're just repeating the process.
I like it.
The only change from one year to the other is we got more people showing up, relevant.
Yeah.
So we've got multiple members showing up from both towns, which, you know, for two years ago, we had nobody, well, other than Paul. But it's great to see some other folks showing up. All right, we got, let's see, we've got the policy committee. Should we skip that one next or you want to think it?
I can speak to the policy.
You can do it, okay.
Perfect.
And then I can speak to the EFD, because that's a new one, but the first three.
Okay.
Yeah, so last school committee meeting, we presented three revised policies for first reading. This is policy BEC, executive sessions, BEDA, negotiation, notification of school committee meetings, and BEDB, agenda format. There weren't huge differences here that we made, but we did change some languages, definitely enough that we, you know, felt it appropriate to give everyone a chance to look through the differences. At this time, I guess, the committee has any comments, or if not, I'm going to approve the revised policies as updated, you know, a couple weeks ago.
All right, no questions for me?
Second.
All right. Can we do one motion?
Sure. I, I just made a motion.
Perfect. All right.
My seconded.
All right, all of you.
Aye.
Aye. Beautiful.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right.
And if you want, I can just give you a quick update. I just wanted to put it on the agenda for future EFD. We are currently going through an audit for food services, and part of that is doing a review of our policies. And we noted, and it also came through in the recent December edition of the MASCE policy revisions. So you can find it on the website there. But we're going to need to make some changes to update this policy. At first, when I looked at it, I thought, okay, that might be like a few little changes. And not that it's drastic, but the language, the way they're both written, they're written really differently. So I think it's gonna take a little more time to do it. But I wanted to put it on the agenda so you know that it's coming. And then, I don't know, I can't recall off the top of my head when the next policy meeting is, but
January.
Is it before meeting? It is. So maybe we'll tackle it before school committee meeting. But it would be good to be able to hopefully get through that. So that way during our audit process, we're completely enough to date with it. And our practice is up to date, but our policy isn't up to date.
Okay.
Right?
Great. All right, sounds good. Let's see, we don't have Vicki here tonight, so I'll short the comments here. Update on the negotiations committee. The negotiations, the subcommittee met with Murta team to commence negotiations on November 27th. And the next meetings are scheduled for January 10th and 24th. I don't have any other matters that we didn't anticipate when the agenda was posted. Anybody else? Forty-eight hours? All right, couple items for the future. We've got the remaining budget presentations. And then we'll take a look at the 2024 school calendar. And I guess with that, we can take a motion to enter into executive session according to exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if, if in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair declares. We will return to the open session only for the purpose of adjurying the meeting. Roll call is needed. So, all right.
Matt Hayden, aye.
Eric Brown, aye.
Sean Nicholson, aye.
Joe Portier, aye.